We're going to have a public hearing on ordinance 20-02, amendments of chapter 265, subdivision of land, and ordinance is 20-3, chapter 305 zoning. Is anybody here for the public hearing?
No, I'm not used to that.
Okay, I'll need a motion to close the public hearing, please.
Close.
Second.
No, here.
Okay, would you say aye?
Aye.
Then it's 7:00, I'm going to call the village and board meeting to order. We'll see the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please have all cell phones silenced during the meeting. I look for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All the neighbors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Most motions carries. Item 5, called the appearances of citizens' comments. No debate will occur with the board on items introduced by citizens. Items will not be acted upon at this meeting but will be referred to the proper staff or committee if action is required, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
All right. I'm Crean Henderson, I am here to invite you to Joe's Small Matter again. We are doing one March 18th in Belleville. The Early Learning Academy there is going to be hosting that one. It's a Wednesday evening from 6:00 until 8:00 PM. It's completely free. No Small Matter has now been screened 1,000 times across the country, and they are working on getting into the movie theaters. So it is definitely getting bigger, and that's why you're hearing more about early care and education across the country. I've also invited everybody to come to my childcare, the Week of the Young Child, April 12 through the 17th, and I would appreciate it if you could make it. We can chat, I'll make sure not to have it at the same time so we don't have a problem with quorums and things like that. But I have some things that are happening in other communities in ways that villages and counties are supporting the childcare within their communities so that there's a place for people to go to take their children so they're safe and cared for, and also kind of get a little education on it, you know, be a good person, and then the parents can work with. So it kind of works both ways, and we've had a lot of sponsors. I'm doing the Week of Palooza, and we've had a lot of sponsors from our community that are stepping up to help with that for fundraiser. So there's definitely some interest and some acceptance in wanting to really help with the early childhood community in our community. So here's this flyer for you, and again, I ask if it ends up being enough of you for a walking forum just to hope that you're not discussing anything village-related, but that there might be enough of you there. And also, I haven't spoken with you, Mr. Administrator, I would like to invite you as well to my program. I have the Great County Work Force Development coming in, oh, sorry, and I've invited state and local federal legislators as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep, if you have any questions, you've got me, yep.
Okay, item 6, a blue local consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second again. Not fast, I'm just...
Call for a favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, aye. What was the motion carry? Item 7, public work consideration discussion, village hall public restroom policy.
Over the last several months, the village hall bathrooms have been the site of several inappropriate behaviors. After the latest incident, which was smoking in the restrooms, staff began locking the restrooms at 4:00 PM when administrative staff leaves for the day. Visitors are still able to use the bathroom by checking out a key from the library, and if the community room is reserved for an event in the evening or over the weekends, the bathrooms do remain unlocked. We are exploring options to have a key made that unlocks the community room and the bathrooms, but no other doors, so that that would be provided to people that are renting it out. And we've also, and we also have the library checks before they leave at the end of the day as well to make sure that no one has stayed in the restroom after checking out a key. This went to the public works committee, and then they recommended continuing to lock the bathrooms when administrative staff leave at 4:00 PM, and it was also something that the police department thought was a good policy to take because of some of the situations that they have encountered as a result of the restrooms after staff have left for the day. So it was requested that this come before the board for some discussion about the future of the policy. We currently, we're locking them at 4:00, and that's our current plan to continue to do so unless the board has another direction they would like us to take.
So what actually has happened, what actually has occurred?
So the least of which is people throwing trash all over the bathrooms, going back in there simply to listen to music, charge their phones, and be loud and hang out where people, I think people can't see them. There've been other incidents that we probably would prefer not to discuss in this setting, but they've been concerning enough that we don't want to allow it to continue. Matters that have involved, have had police involvement, things of that nature, and other sanitary and cleanliness issues that have also occurred that were disappointing, to say the least.
So it's pretty wild. Since we're asked to consider this or act on this, what? I would like to know more about the more serious aspects of what goes on there, and I'm not trying to make a big deal of this, except that we are a tourist town and are concerned about access to public restrooms.
Public works, turn a little more detail, and I agree to that it was this time.
I mean, one, that we, I mean, we had people going to the bathroom on the floor of the restrooms. It's been left overnight to be cleaned the next day. And then, Chief, I don't know, I don't know how much can be shared in matters that involve the police.
You know, it's really, it's all juvenile, I mean, it's protected stuff by juveniles, but there's really no names, but let's just say there's been some potential or for sure romantic interludes taking place between members of the opposite sex in some of the bathrooms to the point where human services were involved and one, and we were involved and the school was, so, I mean, and I think there were some feces spread on the wall. I'm not, I mean, a lot of it is just a core group of kids in the community, and I have to say that I think the biggest core group of kids has kind of moved on and out of the community recently, but I mean, it's been an ongoing thing with the cell phones, the smart devices, those kids go back there when it's cold and it's raining outside, and they sit back, hang out back there, plug their phones in, and stuff like that. So I agree with what the village administrator is saying, I think it's just, it's a safety thing, it's a security thing, and I think just an overall cleanliness that after normal business hours, if those get secured by staff and they get access through the library key. And it's unfortunately just because of the bad location it's in. I mean, you know, when this building was designed 18 years ago, it was different, but now you don't have bathrooms put in the back of buildings like that anymore, and the architects, even things are all up front, so it's just a design we have to live with. And the only other option that would be done would be to do, which is a more costly proposition, would be to put those locks on like a time lock, where you could literally program Monday through Friday, they'd unlock at 8:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the afternoon, they're secured, and, you know, there's different things electronically you can do, but I agree with what the administrator is, and Lieutenant Servant was involved in some of those cases of what was happening in the bathrooms, and I just think it's best all around for everybody's well behavior.
So, I guess the only thing that I can say, you know, it sounds, I think it sounds like a good plan and a good idea and something that unfortunately needs to be done given our changing times. Is there maybe a way that we could put a sign up that says that a key, for legitimate reasons, can be retrieved from the library staff at this time?
Sure.
Oh, yeah, I mean, in that way, if a tourist is over at the park or something like that during library hours and comes over, is that a matter of concern, and wants to use the restroom, there would be a notification there that the restroom is still available during library hours, just they would have to ask for the key. I mean, I think that, you know, is a possibility, but no, I definitely understand why we have to do this, you know, things have changed.
It's really, that whole back hallway isn't bad design.
Right.
You know, because kids can go back here, then they go to the left, and, you know, in fairness to the library staff who's here.
They should have a watch.
Late hours, I mean, kids could be back there, they could come out of the back door, or they could leave the back door unlocked, and kids could go on the back door. So, I mean, just the whole nature of the design is a poor design, but yet it's a design we have to live with.
Right.
So I think, like the village administrator said, I think securing those doors is a stopgap to the problem.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not entirely against that, I'm just trying to put it devil's advocate for a tourist community, I guess, supposing we had security cameras that are always up to the camp, the bathrooms, and, you know, well-marked signs that said we're under surveillance, somebody comes in at 4:00, 5:00, wants to have a romantic assignation, or crashed bathrooms, or whatever, and we have films of people going into bathrooms at a certain time. I mean, obviously, you'd have to follow up on that, I'm just, my concern is, we're a tourist town, we have a lack of public facilities here, and, you know, in the winter it's probably not a big deal, in summer it could be, so, and I, and I will certainly be willing to discuss this further, and for now, go along with the, with the staff recommendation, maybe discuss this further at a later time.
We could explore installation of security cameras as well, if we wanted to make it a part of a 2021 budget initiative or something.
It's $2,500, so it's been set aside for security cameras, so there would be some worry.
Okay. I think the, I think, I think it's possible to do it now, to be honest with you, even though it's a good change, you don't even need actual security cameras, just a sign, just a fake camera, whatever.
You don't want to go down that route, because what you've done is provided a false sense of security, so, I mean, that's, there's a case law on that.
Yeah, I know. It's not like, it's not like people are being murdered in there either, so, not yet, sex.
Well, one of those things too, is, Chuck, with the upcoming PD remodel, is we're going to be incorporating the video system there, so at that point in time, it'd be very easy to piggyback onto that, to add these extra cameras, and I know we're going to put some in the back and on the sides and so on and so forth of the building. So, I mean, I think we're already going that direction, it's just that it's not going to happen tomorrow.
That's, that's great.
And I think, and what that'll also do is allow us, when the officers are in there, because we intend on having like a big screen TV displaying those, and so the officers will have an extra eye over here when they're sitting in there working on their reports, they can, you know, they'll be able to do that, but again, that's not going to happen today or tomorrow because it's all part of our remodel, and I think that's something we can work with the village administrator with, that if we want to pre-plan that and kind of keep that in the whole, you know, general building fund, because the village is paying for it, so whether we add an extra door on the water pump room, or we add extra cameras over here, I mean, it's all going to be part of the big project, so.
I think that sounds like an excellent idea, to go ahead and do it when they're already here.
But to that.
It's my understanding, though, that the, it's not until after hours that it becomes locked, right?
After normal business hours.
From 4:00 to 7:00.
Right.
In village hall office hours, it becomes locked, library hours, it's, they're still open and it's locked.
Right, so that's, I mean, I think that's reasonable, I don't know, maybe during the tourist season, we have more people from the 4:00, 7:00 range. My other question is more on the liability side. Because we have had this discussion, and it is on camera, there's something did happen without any action on our part, would we be held liable if we do absolutely nothing, I mean, for this, because we've already had this discussion? I mean, I'm, I'm in, I mean, you go, I know we're a village facility, I mean, a government facility, and that's different, but I've been in public facilities before where you have to get a key. I mean, I don't, I don't see anything wrong with that if we protect ourselves, and just, it's just a heads up to somebody, maybe somebody who's young or what have you, that isn't a tourist, that realizes that you can't just come here and plug in your cellphone or have a romantic encounter in the bathroom or what have you, so, I mean, I look at school districts who have taken doors off of bathrooms, but, you know, they've done all kinds of things because of bathroom issues, so it's not, it's not unusual that we're having this discussion about being cautious.
I'm not, I'm not sure what the liability is, I imagine, like, Guffington says it's not high, it's probably a low one, but I don't know that for sure, but I would imagine it's something that we're exposed to, at a high risk or something like that. I don't think providing a public restroom opens you up to liability for misuse of those. It's more so just for the protection, we've done it mostly for the protection of the, of the facilities, the cleanliness and the, to avoid.
And someone at the public works meeting, I don't know who it was, you already said, we've had this issue as an ongoing one, it comes and goes, and comes and goes, and we block, and then we don't block, so it's just part of the, part of the cycle that we have, you know, it's like.
It's not unique, it's like.
No.
So what if we just, for now, kept this policy for, for a buck, but put a, put a sign in the lobby saying, if you wish to use the restroom, go to the library, even if you're not a library, pay for your tours.
Sure.
And if you keep in mind the recommendations.
Off of a leaky remodel.
Picking through the remodel, I think that'd be great. I mean, it's not just the bathrooms, that, that encompass the whole facility, right?
Correct, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure we're all on the, aware of the need for visitors from facilities.
So do you need a motion for this, or?
I'm going to make a comment first before we put a motion to Chuck. The library closes at 3:00 on Saturdays, so this building is locked down from 3:00 on Saturday all of Sunday till Monday morning, so as far as anybody wanting to get and use the bathroom on the weekends, it's not available anyway, and there are bathrooms down at the depot. I'm just saying, you know, this building is locked up and secured, the library closes on Saturdays and all of Sunday, and that's when we have the most tourists in town, so.
Good point.
I'm just saying.
Oh, you're, no, you're.
Causing me to...
I'm causing what?
Rethink.
Okay.
Well, I would, I would, you don't need a motion, but I would suggest we, we discuss this further as we get into tourist season.
Sure.
We, it's, it's, does anybody disagree, we are short of facilities in this community for what has really been a growing tourist destination, and it was only last year that the facilities at the depot, which are not exactly the best, but they're sufficient, it was only last year that they were even put up on kiosks downtown, and there are many places along Main Street that say, no, no public restrooms. It's, it's, you know, it's something that we could either toss off on the chamber, saying, either you're visitors, or we can just work on ourselves, which includes these, these facilities, so I guess I would just suggest continue locking up at 4:00 with library access, but maybe revisit this.
Okay.
I agree.
Any further discussion? We just move on then, great. Moving on to item 8, plant division, discussion consideration of ordinance 20-02, amendments of chapter 265, subdivision of land.
This is a culmination of work that village planner Mark Roppers started a few years ago, and it's largely due to bring them up to standards with state law changes and the general cleanup of our subdivision and zoning ordinances. A memo from Mr. Roppers is included in your packet, that's on page 8, and the village attorney has also reviewed the changes to both of these ordinances and has signed off on them. The plant commission did review the changes at their last meeting and recommended approval of both ordinance 20-02 and ordinance 20-03, so, again, it's the subdivision of land ordinances and the zoning ordinance.
So I just, can I just get a couple of questions? So this is pretty much like forward thinking, right, not retro at all, like some of the things in there, like the parking and all of that, you're not going to go, it's not, it's to go forward with new developments, or is it to...
Correct, if there's an existing development that wouldn't meet the standards that are, because they would have met them when they built.
Right, but I mean, anything new that we have isn't going to go back on it, it's all forward thinking. So like, anything, anything that we've, that's been changed in here is going to apply going forward?
Will apply to future applications for zoning changes or subdivisions, correct? Anything moving forward from the data I've optioned.
Because there's a lot of things about parking lots and about signs and different things like that, so I was just wondering, are we looking at correcting things that are out there now, or are we looking at future kind of things?
I think we're connected days are noted here.
For anything?
Most of them.
I guess I didn't really notice that it was stating anything very retro.
A lot of stuff to look through.
It was a lot of stuff to look through, and I gotta admit that I wasn't really understanding everything that they were doing, but I just wanted to, I was just checking to see what, what the basic gist of this was, it's just to bring things up to date.
Correct, so you mentioned the, you mentioned the signs, and that's largely changed due to the Supreme Court decision, that essentially says that you, if you're regulating the content of the sign, then you have impeded on, on the constitutional rights of the sign owners, so really it has to do with, you know, size of signs, so it brings it into line with that decision, and then there's also been other state law changes that we are, that this brings into compliance with.
There was also a lot of information about parking stalls and stuff like that, and how many you have to have for different things like that, I mean, I mean, it all makes sense, but I mean, I'm just thinking about current situations, for example, a school, I mean...
Correct, we wouldn't, we would not go back and apply a new, the new ordinance, new requirements on to an existing developed lot.
So it would just be stuff that we could, as going forward, refer back to if things became an issue, and as anyone to apply going forward, rather than anything that we need to be too concerned about.
Correct, if we had a development application that came in, and they had a parking plan, and it did not comply with them, the ordinance's requirements would apply for that as it comes in, but if something's already built, then we're not, we won't apply these to, we won't apply our parking regulations for how many parking stalls are exist now.
Right, okay.
To something that already exists.
Right.
And there was a question I had, so would that be, so if somebody wanted to build a restaurant downtown on like a vacant lot there on Fifth Avenue, would they then be required to have so many off-street parking stalls per seats in that building? I think it was one stall per three seats or something like that?
Right.
That's what, that's what, I was wondering the exact same thing.
Yeah, how are we going to do that?
Right, exactly, that's exactly what I was saying.
In the past, the village board on, at any level, has given of, pointed out from the variance.
Okay, because, yeah, they do talk about...
That's always a possibility.
Right, they do talk about that in there too, and...
Just to clarify, the village board will no longer hear variance requests under anything for relief to the zoning laws. Statutorily, statutorily, it's required to go to the zoning board as a P S.
Because that's what they were saying on page 49 or whatever, I was trying to read that too.
And I guess my only thought process was, like I said, for a new business, or say somebody wants to go to the old Flanneries, and they're going to have a restaurant there for 100 people, the way I read that, they'd almost have to have 30 stalls of off-street parking to support that.
There are current regulations.
Right, so, without knowing the specific situation, I'd have to research it specifically, but I'd imagine that the regulations that are in place for a site that is unable due to the location it's in to provide off-street parking, that there, I would, if we, if we like, we could not, the board could wait until it has an answer from Mark Roppers specifically on that, but that there would be a mechanism in the ordinances to, to address that.
So let's say one of the businesses, let's say, I'll just pick an example, let's say the bakery goes under, they put a restaurant in, would we just, I mean, does the Main Street have the right amount of stalls for the businesses as they exist? I don't think so, you know, for a restaurant to have how many stalls per three people or whatever, are, are we compliant on Main Street for the businesses versus parking stalls, or is that all subject to grandfather in? Is it all part of a grandfather? What I'm saying is, let's say a new business comes down into Main Street, and we now have a business, there's no more bakery, and now we have a restaurant which serves more people. We can't really make new parking stalls, it is what it is.
And they have no place to put off-street parking.
Right, right.
Because it's all taken.
I don't, I'm not sure.
So I'm looking, I don't, I've never seen...
But they want that differentiation to delineate in here.
Well, it just basically says here on this chart, one space for each three patrons or seats, on, on 35, for restaurants, bars, and lodges, how do we move forward on that? Because I don't think Main Street is compliant with this.
No, but I think you have to...
So let's say a new business...
I don't think any small community is going to be compliant.
So if we have a new restaurant come in on Main Street, one business goes out, one business comes in, we're not going to be compliant, we're just going to have to be...
We're not.
Yeah, but I mean, we're going to have to be what we are.
Right.
So are they saying new construction, or?
It's in...
I think they are, because it starts out with off-street parking spaces. What page do you want now? Look on 31, that's where this, that part of the ordinance starts. And it's talking about all new parking lots and all, all recent questions, all new.
So you're right, Cami, it's, it's going forward. It's all new, right, okay, that's what my biggest concern was, and then, and alterations of existing parking lots shall be subject to...
So everything pretty much stays the way it is unless we move on and have new parking lots?
And I'd have to, I'd have to research the specific question, but oftentimes, I mean, there are main streets that exist with no private parking, it's all, it's all publicly available space, so it's likely that our downtown, if we look at it as a whole with parking, how many parking spaces do we have in the entirety of the downtown, and those public spaces are applied to the businesses that are existing. I can ask Mark how it specifically addresses that, but I don't foresee it as a, as an issue.
And I think the downtown's really the area of concern, I get if the Casey's went in and they were going to do a restaurant, where all that's applicable, I understand all that, but I'm looking at like those vacant lots on Fifth Avenue, where if somebody wanted to go put a new restaurant in, or another winery, or brewery, or distillery, that they have to have maximum, and, and I'm only asking the question so we don't hinder the village, that's what I, so we don't get locked into a corner that you can't say there's no new development, because that's not what I want, we want development.
No, I don't think that this, I mean, it's an existing building with an existing footprint, I don't think it would...
Regardless of what goes in there, it's existing with existing, but we're talking about it. But then about the lots on Fifth Avenue.
But that would depend on all the...
But then kind of also...
All the items that are, that are delineated here, here, enlarged, extended.
Does it say new business or new building?
No, it's building.
Building.
So the building is...
It's, it's predominantly... It's, it's predominantly subdivisions and the signage. And it sounds like a lot of it, from what I gathered from his letter and reading that, is bringing us up to what is already lost. So it's not like we're adding to what doesn't already exist. And then we no longer have the right to approve variances. It goes to court. Is that, that was what you were?
Board of appeal.
Which is a village appointed.
The village board has the right to decide if it goes to the board of appeals, as I understand it. If there is, if it meets the requirements, if the, if the applicant for a variance, if his request, if his or their request for a variance meets the requirements for a variance, okay?
That are present here or whatever. Right, okay.
Whatever your measurements are wrong or so on, it goes to the village board. The village board decides yes, it does meet the requirements for a variance, then they pass it on to the zoning board of appeals. Who is the, which is the final, um, court of appeals to decide whether that variance is granted or not. And that's a, that's a statutory. Statutory change, which I've asked Drake, Mark Roppers, several times because we've been doing it.
Right. So I'm just trying to.
Otherwise for a long time.
But mostly it sounds like we don't have a lot of concerns about going, that we're not going to have to go back on the businesses and everything that we have in existence.
Order, order these changes do not affect existing.
Do not affect this existing property.
It's in here somewhere.
Okay. I know. I made it my event and I might have missed it, but I just wanted to clarify that so that I, so that I know. So that's, that's fine.
So do we want to take a vote out of here or do we want to research it more?
I'm comfortable recommending approval. If the board prefers that I go to Mark Roppers, he did apologize for not being able to be here tonight. We have another meeting to attend. If they would like to wait, we can, we can bring him in at the next meeting to answer any questions he may have.
It sounds to me like it would just be for clarification and not for change.
Correct.
Yeah. So with that in mind, I would move for the, adopt the ordinance that twenty dash two and twenty dash three.
Five second now.
Any more discussion? Don't we have to say these are mandated by the legislature, legislative changes? Maybe have a.
I, I, I understand that, but I, I also understand that I think if a new business were coming in, such as a restaurant or whatever, uh, and they could not meet this criteria, we could give them variance for that because we're certainly not going to say no to new business.
No.
Yeah. So those are questions, Rick. Maybe you could be answered to and share.
Were you wanting to say something?
I was going to say, the flip side of that whole thing though is, see somebody took an old building downtown and they wanted to make it like a three flat apartment with three different families living in there. Then you'd have to adjust the parking for that because they could have two cars per people, per residence, I mean. And you could have up to six new vehicles. When I read through this, it covered the, you know, the residential too. So I mean, and realistically, that could happen tomorrow. I mean, the bakery could go off. Instead of a restaurant going in there, somebody could say, well, we're making it a two flat and we're putting four apartments in there. And it's going to be, you know, two or four two-bedroom apartments. And you could be wrestling that same issue.
It would come in, it would come in through there.
You still have, there'd be visa pop up left or right here.
Yeah, right, right.
It would come in through a zoning change though. I mean, if they're changing, they're changing the actual use. It would come in through an application or through a site plan review or, or through something like that. All that would be worked out through that to make sure it, it complies with the village's existing ordinances.
Exactly what we did back at Flanneries when they switched out. I was just thinking about they sold them some property to fulfill that requirement.
And that's great. I think as long as the property is available in downtown, there's more property available. So. Again, my only concern, I didn't say once the village gets boxed into a corner, that we lose business because of it. That's what I'm, I'm not looking.
I think there's.
Parking tickets aren't a thing.
I think there's largely, there is a lack of, of choice in, in many of these changes, just to clarify.
Right, to be clear, to be clear on that. Yeah, exactly. It's, it makes sense.
Okay, we got a motion in the second. All papers say aye.
Aye.
All motions carried. Uh, item nine, new board visits, discussion considerations of residency twenty dash zero six, appointing election officials. Lim?
Yeah, I've got two new people willing to serve as election officials, Mark Anderson and P. Gus, right? Once she's off the board. And we can always use more people. You know, there's probably three of the officials are on the ballot in April and it can't, or their spouses are, and so they can't be used. So it's always good to have extras. Some of them aren't liking to work a whole shift. It's a really long day. So it's just helpful to have a few extras.
All right. Should we go ahead and approve those two individuals for that?
Correct.
Any more discussions? Any not all papers say aye?
Aye.
All ayes. All motions carried. Uh, there's an old president's report, or administrator's report.
I will be out of the office Wednesday through Friday. I'll be attending a Wisconsin City Management Association Professional Development Conference. So I'll have my, I'll have my phone on me and I'll be checking email periodically, but other than that, I will be out of the office for the next few days.
Me too. You too, what?
I'll be out of my office for the next few days.
Going for the business?
Here in town, we are reserved.